Buenos dias, gracias a todos por estar aquí. El Comité de Educación, Self-Determinación y Preservación Histórica, Infraestructura, Seguridad B外, Asuntos Exteriores y Transporte Marítimo va a ahora convenir este audiencia pública. Hoy es martes, 24 de agosto de 2020, y ahora es 17:05. Para recordar, en concordancia con la ley gubernamental abierta, se enviaron notificaciones por correo electrónico a todos los senadores, interesados en todos los medios de comunicación principales en todas las redes de transmisión en torno al martes 17 de agosto de 2021 y el viernes 20 de agosto de 2021. La noticia de esta audiencia fue también disponible en el sitio web del comité de legislación de Guam. Quiero agradecer a el senador y secretaria legislativa Amanda Shelton por estar presente hoy, quien también es vicepresidente de este comité, y al senador Moylan por su constante colaboración en los esfuerzos de este comité, senador Tony Ada y senador Talatay DeGui. Gracias colegas por estar aquí esta noche. Esta audiencia pública proporcionará todos discusiones sobre la legislación propuesta respecto a las agencias de cuarentena y customs. Los estatutos incluirán ciclos de entrenamiento mandatorios, actualización de requisitos estatutales, y también habrá discusiones sobre la paridad de policías civiles de voluntarios de los aires internacionales de Guam. Sólo para notar que anticipamos el estatuto del estatuto de cuarentena y customs. Sin embargo, ha sido la solicitud de CQA que nos contactaron ayer para retrasar esa audiencia hasta octubre. Creo que el jefe de tribunales también tiene algún input sobre el asunto. Así que hoy vamos a discutir el estatuto número 139-36 COR, que es un acto para agregar la sección 73.154 al capítulo 73, título 5, anotado en la guama, en relación con el mandato de entrenamiento anual de oficia de customs. También escucharemos el estatuto número 92-36 LS, un acto para amender la sección 1112.3 Echo del capítulo 1, título 12, anotado en la guama, en relación con la paridad para el aeroporto de Guam, el Reserva de Policía Civil de Voluntarios. Empezaremos con el estatuto número 139-36, que fue patrocinado por el senador James Moylan, co-patrocinado por el senador Tony Ada, el senador Frank Blas y el senador Peto Terlahi, el senador Clint Regal, el senador Christopher Doinas y el senador Joe Sin Augustin. Senador Moylan, si quieres hacer alguna comentario sobre el estatuto.
Gracias, Madam Presidente, y gracias a mis colegas y nuestros invitados aquí hoy para testificar sobre el 139-36. Especialmente quiero agradecer a mis co-patrocinadores sobre el estatuto también. El 139-36 es un acto para agregar la sección 73.3154 al capítulo 73, título 5, anotado en la guama, en relación con el mandato de entrenamiento anual de oficia de customs. El estatuto crea un nuevo estatuto que mandaría a las agencias de cuarentena y customs a llevar a cabo ciclos de entrenamiento anuales de oficia de customs. El estatuto crea un nuevo estatuto que mandaría a las agencias de cuarentena y customs a llevar a cabo ciclos de entrenamiento anuales de oficia de customs. El director de la agencia deberá incluir cualquier costo asociado con el entrenamiento como parte del presupuesto anual presentado al gobernador. La legislación requerirá hasta 20 candidatos anualmente. Por mandar estos ciclos de entrenamiento en el estatuto haría más fácil para la agencia incluir el costo asociado al ciclo en su presupuesto anual. Y promovería futuras legislaturas y encontrar los fondos necesarios para asegurar que estos estatutos no terminen siendo mandatos sin financiamiento. No debería ser una necesidad, en cambio, debería ser una necesidad. Y además, estas agencias de customs juegan un papel crítico en mantener a las comunidades y las fronteras seguras. Sin embargo, actualmente están enfrentando fallas de oficia, además, con cualquier entidad pierdes a buenas personas todo el tiempo, ya sea debido a la retirada, la dejada para otras oportunidades o incluso la relocation. Solo es responsable mantener el proceso de reclutamiento y de entrenamiento consistentemente continuo. De nuevo quiero agradecer a mis colegas co-patrocinadores por eso. Y Madam Presidente, espero la discusión sobre este estatuto. Gracias.
Gracias. Queremos notar que tenemos el director de customs Ike Paredo presente, Ralph Scambaluri, Rick Blas, el jefe de customs Vincent Perez, el ex director de customs, el Sr. McDonald, y John Kinata de la GIAA, quien ahora es el gerente general de la GIAA, quien también es ex senador. Así que gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Empezaremos, para aquellos que están aquí para testificar, empezaremos con el director de customs, luego irán con el jefe, y luego procederemos de ahí. Director, muchas gracias. Pueden proceder. Y también para notar que Ralph Scambaluri también era el ex jefe de customs. Así que gracias por estar aquí, señor.
A mi derecha estaba el ex director de customs también.
Rick Blas.
Buenas tardes, senador Nelson y miembros del comité de audiencia. Mi nombre es Ike Paredo y soy el director de la agencia de cuarentena y customs. Antes de comenzar, me gustaría agradecer al comité por darme la oportunidad de testificar en apoyo del estatuto 139. La agencia de customs y de cuarentena es responsable de aplicar numerosas leyes locales relacionadas con el transporte de pasajeros, cargos y movimientos de conviviente en los aires de entrada de Guam. Es la misión de la agencia mejorar y proteger la calidad de vida para el pueblo de Guam. La misión se ejecuta a través de las cuatro divisiones principales: la división de inspección y control, la división especial de aplicación, la división de logística y apoyo, y, por supuesto, la división administrativa. Los esfuerzos de CQA evitan la importación de narcóticos ilícitos, protegen nuestra flora y fauna de la introducción de lesiones, pasos y enfermedades, evitan la introducción de la propagación de la cuarentena y enfermedades comunicables, reducen accidentes de automóviles motorizados a la aplicación de los estándares de seguridad de seguridad de automóviles federales y las regulaciones de control de contaminación aérea federales sobre todos los vehículos importados, aplicar requisitos sustantivos en relación con el comercio exterior y interraker de armas. Protege nuestro país de la amenaza de terrorismo en nuestras fronteras y facilita la Ley de Seguridad de la Tierra de Guan en el puerto de entrada. Además, generar ingresos a la evaluación y recolección de usados sobre la mercancía importada, proteger el negocio legítimo al aplicar el copyright, patentes, marcas tradicionales y regulaciones de productos de Guam en todos los puestos de entrada. Antes de COVID-19, la agencia, en una base mensual, despejó 1,170 aviones, 119,000 pasajeros, procesó 4,664 cargos de entrada de cargos y recolectó aproximadamente 1,2 millones de dólares en impuestos de pasajeros. A pesar de la escasez de personal, los oficiales de customs continuamente realizan sus tareas de manera profesional. Nuestra misión ha expansado desde la década de los 90, cuando CQA tenía una fuerza saludable de más de 220 oficiales. En los últimos 20 años, fallas personales, falta de equipo, suministros, vehículos, oportunidades de entrenamiento han gravemente impactado la efectividad de la agencia en las fronteras. Durante este tiempo, ha habido una expensión de leyes federales destinadas a la prevención del terrorismo. Mientras tanto, nuestros números han estado disminuyendo. CQA ahora está bajo 118 oficiales para proporcionar servicio a nuestros puestos de entrada en un esfuerzo para prevenir drogas ilícitas de golpear nuestras calles. Hoy, nuestros recursos se han dispersado de forma thin. Además de la preocupación típica de los de customs, los preocupados de seguridad nacional y de la tierra de Guan relacionados con la amenaza de terrorismo, apareciendo, aumentando el alcance de la misión de la agencia sin una adecuada aumento en el personal para lidiar apropiadamente con esta amenaza. La pandemia ha visto una reducción severa en los vuelos comerciales y pasajeros llegando a Guam. Aunque esto es el caso, hemos maximizado el uso de nuestros oficiales al moverlos a otras áreas de aplicación críticas durante el inter. Tenemos la oportunidad de ampliar nuestra fuerza durante esta pandemia. Los viajes comerciales con pasajeros están aumentando. Para efectivamente proporcionar personal a nuestras fronteras, CQA debe enfocarse en reclutar, contratar y mantener el mejor personal y equiparlos con las habilidades necesarias y apoyo para crecer. El financiamiento para los otros oficiales de customs debe aumentar para garantizar la seguridad y mitigar los largos tiempos de espera para ambos, el comercio y el viaje a nuestros puestos de entrada. Actualmente, la agencia está desafiada por la escasez de personal debido a la retirada, resignación y depolución militar. Los 118 oficiales de customs son orgullosos de su parte en mantener nuestro país libre de terrorismo, nuestros vecinos salvados de drogas, nuestra economía salvada de comercio ilegal mientras garantizamos que el comercio legal y los viajeros se muevan expeditamente a nuestros puestos de entrada. Estos oficiales merecen más recursos para realizar sus trabajos mejor y más eficientemente. El estatuto 139-136 dirigirá el vacío garantizando que la agencia será capaz de reclutar en una base anual 20 oficiales de customs para proteger nuestro país, nuestro pueblo y nuestros recursos. Y también, también me gustaría mencionar que espero que los otros oficiales también sean financiados para este año fiscal que es el año fiscal 22. En conclusión, de nuevo me gustaría agradecer al comité por la oportunidad de testificar ante ustedes hoy y con gentileza pido a los miembros del comité a apoyar el estatuto 139-136. Gracias.
Gracias, Director Paredo. Jefe Perez.
Gracias. Buenas tardes. Gracias, senador Nelson, senador Shelton, senador Moylan, senador Ada y senador Tadegui. Como pueden ver, hoy tenemos un conjunto completo de directores y jefes. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Vincent Perez. 我现在是 Guam Customs and Quarantine 的副总统 Así que el director, no voy a rehash lo que el director mencionó, pero te dejaré saber que he estado, he estado con esto, crecí en esta agencia. En total, tengo aproximadamente 34 años de servicio. Y una de las cosas que seguimos viendo es el problema de tener que llegar a un cierto número. El director Paredo lo mencionó antes. Estábamos bien en la zona de más de 200, a lo largo de los oficiales que nos preocupaban. Y esto fue antes de 11 de septiembre. Y después de 11 de septiembre, fue cuando todo golpeó el fan. Había una reconfiguración de diferentes entidades federales y realmente no se tradujo a nosotros localmente. Parece que el gobierno federal entiende la importancia y la necesidad de poder proporcionar los recursos, pero aquí estamos, estamos luchando. Voy a hablar de algunos puntos muy cortos, pero solo quiero asegurarme de que la gente entienda que hemos estado luchando con el reclutamiento y también incluido, es dos prong, es la retención. Así que operacionalmente, en el mundo de hoy, y esto no incluye esa instalación de inspección satelital que está planeando construir, operacionalmente, la agencia de customs y de cuarentena requiere 221 oficiales. Actualmente, tenemos 118, y eso incluye a tres entrenadores que van a graduarse en los próximos meses. Así que voy a devolverlo un poco. Así que en enero de 2014, la agencia de customs y de cuarentena, acabamos de tener la graduación para el 10º ciclo, que agregó 20 oficiales, llevando nuestro total hasta ese momento a alrededor de 139. A través de la retirada, los retiros y otros factores de attrición, estábamos en este punto donde estábamos 118. Una de las cosas que estamos mirando también es que tenemos una fuerza de customs que está envejeciendo. En este momento, tenemos alrededor de 38% de nuestra fuerza hoy es retirada con ocho años hasta 25 o 30 años de servicio. Y en cualquier caso, vamos a necesitar asegurarnos de que mentamos, entrenamos la próxima generación de liderazgo. Pero no podemos hacer eso si no contratamos. Y muchas de las cosas que estamos haciendo siempre están vinculadas, siempre nos dicen, ok, así que antes de la pandemia, una de las cosas que necesitas hacer de customs es que tienes que asegurarte de que no te vayas más allá de tu nivel y siempre tenemos desafíos en tratar de abordar esto a través de cambios de tasa. Ahora aquí estamos, después de diciembre de 2019, la pandemia golpeó con toda fuerza en marzo. Y sin embargo, el hembrete sigue continuando. Así que, ¿dónde estamos ahora? Empecé a enfatizar los 118 oficiales que actualmente tenemos. Y mantén en cuenta que cuando la pandemia golpeó, todavía estamos aquí en la frontera proporcionando apoyo. Somos la cara de la cuarentena. Muchos de nuestros oficiales, son los héroes inútiles. No son solo las enfermeras, no son solo los trabajadores de salud pública. Nuestro labio en nuestros hombros dice que somos customs y de cuarentena. Sin embargo, nadie parece reconocer ese hecho. Sin embargo, cuando estamos aquí en la frontera, somos los que estamos entrevistando para asegurarnos de que nuestro país es seguro. Teníamos un oficio que se fue de COVID. Teníamos un ex oficio que nos abandonó y él se fue de COVID. Así que esto es, lo que estoy tratando de entender es que estamos escaseando en recursos. Y me gustaría decirles gracias a los directores y a los jefes que están aquí hoy en apoyo de 139-36, porque ven la necesidad de que podamos reclutar. Y los que no pueden ser elegidores, así que como habla de reclutamiento de ciclos de 20, hombre, si yo hubiera ido, habría contratado 30. 30 por ciclo, solo porque eso nos hace más cerca de los 220 oficiales que necesitamos en lugar de más tarde. Porque al mismo tiempo que estamos contratando oficiales, estamos perdiendo oficiales. En la previa, creo que fue en nuestra audiencia de presupuesto, todos nos dimos cuenta que era alrededor de, promedimos cuatro oficiales anualmente que perdemos. Así que, si tomamos en consideración que vamos a contratar 20 y perdemos cuatro, contratamos 20, perdemos cuatro, contratamos 20, perdemos cuatro, nos tomaría aproximadamente siete o ocho años para llegar donde necesitamos, en lugar de tal vez cuatro años si hacemos los 30. Así que me gustaría terminar diciendo que apoyo 139-36 y espero que todos estén en apoyo de ayudarnos a proteger este país. Gracias.
Gracias, jefe. Me gustaría disagreeir contigo cuando el declaración es que nadie, nadie se preocupa, nadie nota, y eso es incorrecto. Hemos estado durante los últimos cuatro años, hemos estado tratando de trabajar con los de customs.
Ok, estoy diciendo esto por frustración.
Jefe, estoy hablando. Gracias. Y luego puedes hablar. Así que simplemente, ya sabes, hemos estado trabajando con los de customs durante muchos años tratando de hacer pasar los ciclos, así que es la declaración que estás diciendo que nadie se preocupa y nadie está escuchando es incorrecta, eso es todo. Si hay algo más que quieras agregar, entonces.
Oh, ok, me agradezco. Sí, debo corregirme porque sí, estamos trabajando con tu buen office y hemos estado tratando, pero solo estoy diciendo esto por frustración porque no estamos en ningún lugar donde necesitamos estar a lo largo de la cantidad que se preocupa. Esto son 34 años de frustración que está solo ventando, así que sí, y gracias por tu apoyo.
Gracias, jefe. Director Rick Blas, ¿te gustaría dar testimonio en este momento? Ex director.
Muchas gracias, senador, y pensé que mi buen amigo aquí estaba supuesto estar antes de mí, así que puedo escuchar lo que él tiene que decir sobre lo que hemos estado haciendo en customs. Sí, por favor. ¿Eso es ok?
Sr. Scambaluri, por favor, state su nombre para el registro.
Mi nombre es Ralph Scambaluri, soy el ex jefe de customs y soy del hermoso pueblo de Talapofo. Y estoy empezando por Rick, que se llama White Base. Estoy aquí en apoyo a este estatuto. Este estatuto ha sido necesario durante muchos, muchos años. Creo que en esta mesa ahora mismo, como el jefe Vincent dijo, nunca había visto realmente una reunión de jefes y ex directores en apoyo de un estatuto, y esto es realmente, realmente alentador que veo casi cerca de 200 años de servicio aquí arriba para apoyar un estatuto que es necesitado enormemente. He estado, empecé la agencia en 1979, terminé mi carrera en 2016, el 1 de abril. Y fue tan desafiante conseguir ciclos, creo que nuestro ex director en la parte de la mesa, tenía un ciclo de 50, si estoy correcto. Y ese fue el ciclo más grande que hemos tenido en la historia de customs. Y desde ese momento, ese momento, y luego comenzó a rascacielos a ciclos pequeños. Y creo que el último ciclo fue de 25 o 20, si estoy correcto. Vincent, el director Paredo podría corregirme. Pero es aterrador porque como el jefe Vincent dijo, el ciclo, el primer ciclo durante el tiempo de JQ Kanata y Ike Paredo, ellos van a retirarse en otros cinco años o así. Y ese es el volumen de oficiales y de customs. Y luego van a tener una humedad, una gran derramación de oficiales. E incluso si tienes, son 25 oficiales, voy a recomendar que llegue a 50 o más porque vamos a perder, quiero decir, la agencia va a perder una enorme cantidad de personal. No solo eso, el carga de trabajo va a ser más. Creo que va a ser un peso para la agencia y para el director y el jefe y todos los oficiales si en la agencia. Va a ser más difícil entonces debido a esto. Y en realidad, hemos estado en cuarentena desde el día uno, está en nuestro labio izquierdo de nuestro brazo, es cuarentena, ha estado allí desde el día uno. Va a ser tremenda trabajo y los oficiales, por supuesto, están dispuestos porque se han firmado por ello. Pero no podemos, los de customs no pueden tener un ciclo cada cinco años o seis años. Se caen como mosquitos. Tú puedes contratar 25, enviarlos por un año de educación. La agencia paga por ello, el gobierno, ya sabes, pone mucho énfasis en, ya sabes, sacar a estos tipos al campo y luego el siguiente mes o dos renuncian y van a otros trabajos, trabajos privados. Van a las entidades federales y perdemos aproximadamente seis a ocho si en dos años. Y luego tenemos que empezar de nuevo y de nuevo y de nuevo. Es solo, es solo una puerta revolviendo, es tan difícil porque Guam Customs treina a estos individuos básicamente para pasar a otro lugar porque el salario no está allí. El salario no está allí realmente, literalmente. Luego, cuando descubren que pueden ser otros posiciones allí en el mercado, se irán porque es, quieren ayudar a su familia y ayudar a su hogar. Así que hay muchas cosas, podríamos hablar de customs y de ciclos y cosas así y lo que la agencia necesita hacer, pero he estado diciendo esto desde el día uno, podría decirlo ahora mismo en la sesión en casa porque estaba sentado aquí como personal uniforme antes y tal vez estaba engañado, pero creo que la agencia debe ser federalizada. Debería ser federalizada para proteger, verdaderamente proteger este país. Tenemos muchos activos aquí, en el gobierno y federalizados, pero creo que debería ser federalizado. Creo que entonces podríamos ver, sin ofensa a Guam Customs, están haciendo su mejor. Durante muchos, muchos años han estado tratando de hacer su mejor, pero es solo el financiamiento. Es tan difícil conseguir a estos tipos, conseguir el financiamiento de la agencia 100% en todo lo que necesitan, desde vehículos hasta pistolas, hasta entrenamiento, hasta maestras. Solo piensa cuando tuvieron el desgaste, el desgaste radiológico de Japón. El país no estaba preparado para ningún tipo de problemas radiológicos aquí en Guam. El gobierno federal debió venir, los customers de Estados Unidos debieron venir y apoyar a customs y los agradezco, pero la agencia es solo, no es capaz, pero simplemente no tienen el financiamiento para realmente proteger este país 100%. Así que eso es mi, la gente va a debatirme sobre la federalización, pero creo que es la forma correcta de ir, pero si no podemos ir de esa manera porque es un gran obstáculo. Creo que la agencia debería realmente verse y financiarlos lo que realmente necesitan, porque hay muchas cosas. La agencia hace tantas cosas variantes, desde apoyar a la OC, apoyar a la FBI, ATF, cada entidad allí en el gobierno federal que es un grupo de tareas relacionado. Y están saliendo solo para obtener activos para ayudar a la agencia a apoyarse. Esa es la única razón por qué. Y solo piensa lo que tienen que hacer. Perdieron el personal de nuevo porque tienen que cumplir con esas posiciones allí. Así que podría hablar, tengo un corazón de customs y todos tenemos un corazón de customs. Tenemos cerca de 200 años de servicio aquí en esta mesa. Y creo que es muy raro conseguir jefes y ex directores aquí solo por este tema, pero este tema es crucial. Pero creo, senador, deberíamos aumentar la cantidad de 25. Debería ser más porque vamos a perder si no ajustamos el salario. Vamos a perder a los tipos. Vamos a entrenar para el gobierno federal y sectores privados. Y así es como veo. Y no lo veo, lo he experimentado durante muchos años. Así que me gustaría devolverlo a mi buen amigo Rick, pero podría seguir diciendo por qué. Pero creo que todos sabemos en esta mesa, ya sabes, lo que es necesario para la agencia, pero necesitan pasar y hacer que las cosas se vuelvan lo que es necesario ahora porque tal vez la federalización es un largo camino hacia el que debemos abordar. Pero creo que algo que debería ser, creo que el chateo debería estar ahí ya sobre mirar esto y el movimiento, pero creo que es un largo camino y creo que lo que el director necesita y el jefe es el apoyo que ustedes siempre han estado dando. Incluso como dijiste, cuatro años, porque lo he intentado muchas veces ir a un presupuesto, tratar de obtener el personal y todo el día, todo el día voy allí, no hay dinero, no hay dinero, no puedes hacerlo, no puedes financiar las posiciones. Y luego solo para obtener los ciclos, quiero decir, tarda a veces cuatro o cinco años para obtener un ciclo. Y luego cuando la administración cambia, todo cambia de nuevo. Así que es tan difícil. Así que este estatuto es necesario. Creo que el número debería aumentar porque todavía vas a perder. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Sr. Scambaluri. Ex director Jim McDonald, ¿tiene algún testimonio sobre este estatuto?
Buenas tardes, Madam Presidente, senador Moylan, senador Tony Ada y senador... Primero de todo, ya sabes, estoy aquí en apoyo de el estatuto 139-36 por la razón de que los de customs están experimentando, ya sabes, y el pueblo de Guam está experimentando no solo una epidemia, estamos experimentando dos. Tenemos una mayor epidemia de drogas y, por supuesto, una epidemia de pandemia que está pasando aquí. Y es muy crucial que este estatuto se realice. Y estoy de acuerdo con el jefe, el ex jefe Scambaluri y el resto que en lugar de 20, ese tema necesita subir a como 50, como el ex director aquí, JQ Kanata, cuando era nuestro director, teníamos 55 en un ciclo. Y eso realmente hizo que los de customs, teníamos secuelas recordadas, ya sabes, y esto y eso. Anoche usábamos 18 perros trabajadores, 18 perros trabajadores. Esos, esos perros trabajadores eran como superhumanos. Y ahora estos pobres tipos están, ya sabes, bajo 10, eso no es aceptable. Ya sabes, si miras el periódico, apenas ves ningún DUI hoy. Todo es, alguien fue arrestado por fútbol. Alguien fue asesinado. Alguien fue arrestado, ya sabes, robado, burglar. Así que es por eso que es muy importante que apoyemos a la agencia de customs. Y senador Telenya, has sido un fuerte proponente, ya sabes, de customs, pero creo que necesitamos cero y tratar de proteger los fondos de customs para que, no como antes, el número de jefe, cuando creo que casi medio millón de dólares fue quitado de nuestro fondo especial. Ahora lo ves, ahora no lo ves, ya sabes, así que son cosas... So it's things like that. We need to protect the funding for Customs. Once it's there, it should be utilized for the purpose of strengthening the borders. Because, you know, worst-case scenario, one day, if we can't man our borders properly, it's going to happen, like what happened in Puerto Rico. USCBP took over, because everything was slipping through the borders. The government could not handle the borders. So it's in our best interest, you know, if we want, if we want to remain, you know, Guam Customs to remain within the government of Guam, we need to give them the full resource that they're, that's needed. What is it now, the Chief, how much is it now, the service fee for each passenger?
Eight twenty-nine.
Eight twenty-nine? You cannot even buy a lunch plate with that. You know, it's a joke, you know. But, you know, I'm here to support these guys, and I'll always be here, you know, for these guys. But we need to have sustainability for these officers, so that they can remain there and they can protect our borders, because you're looking out there, how many families? I'm sure every person here has a member or a relative in their family that's suffering from drug addiction. So, you know, I'm in full support, Senator. Thank you, you guys, for being here. And I want to thank all my former bosses here, because these guys have a lot of knowledge, you know, behind them, and a lot of weight. So, just mercy, Senator Todd.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I'll now open up the panel for questions. Senator Moynihan, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Blas, did you want to say anything? I thought you were going to, I thought you were waving it to Mr. Scambaluri.
I wanted to take on board what my colleagues were talking about, and thank you, Senator. My name is Ricardo Blas. I'm the retired Chief of Customs in 2007, and also was the Director, retiring also in 2007 for the agency. I also like to acknowledge Senator Shelton, Senator Moynihan, Senator Ada, Senator Tidery, and thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to testify before this, your committee. I'm here today in support of Bill 139-36. As I listen to my colleagues and my former Director, John Kanata, talk about, and I know that John hasn't spoken yet, they talk about their history, the challenges that were faced, and I would like to read off from what I initially prepared, but then I'd like to add some more comments to that. So again, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Senators. I have served the Customs Agency from 1974 and retired in 2007. I carry with me the distinction of being the only Customs Officer to come up the rank and file of Customs and Quarantine Agency, serving as an Officer One to Lieutenant to Chief of Customs, and was selected by then Governor Camacho and Lieutenant Governor Moynihan to serve as the Director of Customs and Quarantine Agency, achieving what no other career officers, career officers ever achieved in the history of the agency. In the years of serving as Chief of Customs, I was not able to achieve many of the programs that I felt would make better officers. Having the support of Governor Camacho and Lieutenant Governor Moynihan, we journeyed to recruit officers, transitioned plant protection and quarantine officers to Customs Officers based on what I felt appropriate, because of the limited opportunities to advance the PPQ officers in the Customs Agency. We set our goals to increase the number of officers at five ports of entry based on operational needs. We met with the Department of Administration staffers who helped direct us to what we needed to do, to do, and as we grew the agency, we started to feel that, feel the growing pains. We were lacking to fully equip the officers with all the tools they needed to carry out their duties and responsibilities. As we focused on the growth of the agency, I realized that we were now playing catch-up to support these officers. Officers needed more training, but we focused more on the knowledge of rules and regulations, our import and export regulations, local executive orders, and federal laws applicable to Guam. As we started to focus on the training cycle, 9/11 happened. That changed our priorities. We knew that we had to arm our officers to ensure border security. We qualified many officers to be range masters to train our officers in the use of firearms, and expanded the Special Enforcement Unit, to which Senator Frank Blas Jr. worked very closely with us as part of the law enforcement drug task force. I can go on and talk about all the positive things that we all contributed towards expanding our agency, but this hearing is not about this. It's about an agency that struggles to retain officers, losing them to better-paying federal enforcement jobs, such as US Customs and Borders and other federal jobs, or to the US Marshal Service and Superior Court of Guam. At the current numbers of US Customs and Border Agents slash Immigration or ICE that works above us at the airport, I would say that a good 30% of their manpower are all former Customs Officers from our agency. I also like to go on record to also acknowledge the fact that the SeaTac Borders out of Seattle, Washington, the head of Customs Operation is also supported by five other officers from Guam Customs. So while we continue to promote and assist the agency develop, there's also a reality that we are losing them to other opportunities in the field. Increasing the numbers, yes, we want to continue to do that, because it's not a safe environment. And when we talk about numbers, when I came in in 1974, there was only 22 Customs Officers. And I believe when Director Paredo came in a couple of years later, we were still below the 30 officers manning, I believe, almost nine ports of entry, that included several ports and naval station, nit cams. And sometimes we do additional duties and responsibilities with USDA. The biggest compromise to any recruitment process is the loss of the custom services to those interested in pursuing an additional career with the Guam National Guard, almost immediately after completing Customs Training. While we fully support those wishing to volunteer and serve the National Guard, management is left with having to deal with a compromised port of entry through the shortage of manpower. About two years before my retirement, we were, we were feeling the impact from officers having to join the National Guard to deployment under Title X. We also learned that many officers were requesting to be deployed using Title X. While officers fulfill the missions of the National Guards, Customs Operation is compromised. Officers oftentimes facing shortages, especially at the airport, arrival of Customs Inspection, where we had always planned to have minimum manpower, 15 officers and supervisors. Faced with this situation, I was left with no other choice but to include extended on-the-job training as part of the recruit training cycle, for a minimum of two to four weeks at each assignment station to about six months per assignment, which gave us some breathing room to fully integrate the recruits to Customs Operation. During my time with the agency, these recruits would then serve about 18 months at the Antonio B. Wampet Duty Station, to include the US Postal at Bergada, Customs Officers at Anderson Air Force Base, which has three shifts, six months at Air Cargo, and six months at the Commercial Port Duty Station. And this is not to, did not include these special assignments to US Customs DEA and on some occasion with the FBI. Unfortunately, what I thought was an adequate plan to serve the interests of the agency was met with compromises again, because those assigned to the training section were also deployed, adding to delays in our attempts to address shortfalls. While I have identified briefly what we faced back then, the question now to this committee is, what, if any, has the new leadership done to further address some of the challenges they now face? It is not my intention to place them in a situation, but it has been my strong belief, which many officers will attest to, that my role as either Chief of Customs or Director of Customs was to provide all the necessary tools to my officers and supervisors to ensure that we manage border security by providing inadequate manpower at our ports of entry. Bill 139-36 points out the shortage of Customs Officers. What does this mean? What are the causes? Does the bill provide for a solution addressing the shortfall and meeting the obligation of Customs to safeguard our borders? It fails to point out why the agency is faced with such shortages and why, or why they are coming up short. It comes down to two key individuals in the agency, the Chief of Customs and Director of Customs. I'm also aware of the protocols required to recruit officers and the process to get them approved, and support from the Department of Administration, thank you, Bureau of Budget Management, and Governor's Office before presenting to this body. I also believe that this legislation must also recognize the fact that under Customs User Fee, that it is the only government agency that is self-funded through the service fee. During my term as Chief of Customs, we had a force of 170 to 200 officers. And I mentioned earlier, when I first came in, we only had 22 officers, and I was number 22. And even back then, when I first came on board, Customs was not allowed to recruit anyone below the age of 21, because of the law restricting that to carry firearms. So there was a lot of, I would say, an older legacy individuals that were there that I think during my time period, along with Director Paredo, I think in about 10 years' time, we started to see a lot of them exit the agency with new officers coming back on. I also have to acknowledge the fact that back then, we really didn't have a training program. All this happened, I would say, about a good 20, 25 years ago, when we worked with people like Dan Astorga from the Department of Administration, Winnie Flores, Ben Delacruz, and they helped guide us in understanding the needs of the agency, the recruitment of officers, and trying to outfit them to meet the requirements to pursue better-paying jobs for the officers, also safeguards for the officers, and providing them the necessary tools. In some of our work, there's an assumption that Customs duties and responsibility only falls at the ports of entry of Commercial Port and the Airport and Air Cargo. Many do not realize that many of our duties go beyond our borders. I remember having to be on a helo ride to go out almost 30 miles, meet a ship that was in distress, or one of the crew members was in distress, and we flew out that far to try to retrieve the crew members. Oftentimes, I remember the Coral Princess, it's a Hong Kong passenger liner, back in 1976. It took them a good eight, nine hours to try to come into our ports because of the typhoon conditions that we were faced in, but they had to call port to get away from the storm. We had to fly out a good, almost 15 miles, and talk about seasick. It's not a healthy thing to experience and then try to carry out the duties and responsibilities. We also used to do en route inspection, where we go to ports of Hong Kong and Japan, board ships to come back into Guam, do the inspection, so that on arrival, they're no longer faced with having to undergo quarantine inspection or immigrations. So we do a lot of this where many people don't realize, and having a small force of officers with a lot of duties and responsibilities is really a challenge for both the Director and the Chief. And again, I just want to make sure that both my colleagues here don't get my message wrong when I say that the responsibility rests with the Director and the Chief, because they are, at this moment, the two individuals responsible for the agency. What's also missing in the recruitment process, and it was under our terms, where we made a specific hiring of female only, and I have not seen that. I think it's very important when we start to talk about gender equity that Customs brings onboard the equal amount of female representative of officers that would augment the agency. I think that's a very important message to my colleagues on the table, to express to them that the possibility of having to recruit an all-female recruitment cycle is very important. We did it once. I, we hope to, well, I hope that they continue to pursue them. And then, almost there. And again, going back on the training cycle, and I think this is also important, we trained a lot of K-9 officers. We had a training cycle down in Canberra, Australia. That was probably one of the better programs that we had, but due to the changes of mission with Canberra, we had to go back to Front Royal, Virginia, where at US Customs. And also highlighting the fact, when we talked about the user fee, and Rob wanted to remind James McDonald that, is it a one-choice or two-choice for that 850 user fee? The Japan user fee, I believe, is a little bit above $50. And the one thing I do note is that any time Guam tries to do something in terms of increasing the passenger fee, there appears to be an objection from the business entity. But yet, when you compare our role and our expenses in terms of managing the ports, it's oftentimes overlooked, not taken into consideration what the other ports that are operating in the same arena in terms of user fees. I know that, I visit Fiji a lot, because I have an office down in Suva, and they started to charge, I believe it was 35 or 45 Fijian dollars now. So again, our fees are small compared to many of the other ports in our region. I'm very sure that, I think if we, a case study should be made regarding how to move forward in terms of securing the funds necessary to provide for the financial support of the recruitment of officers. And I know I've taken maybe too much time, but I wanted to again thank you, Senators, for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Blas. Mr. Kanata?
Thank you, Madam Senator, Senator Shelton, Senator Moynihan, Senator Ada, and of course, Senator Tidery. I, I'm here to support this bill as the first Customs Director of the Customs and Quarantine Agency. I went through all this. I'm the author of the Customs and Service Charge Program, which provided the funding for Customs to be separated from the general fund. I only, I would request, and these, the other folks have said that before, that on your, on line or page two, line two, that that be amended to say no less than 20 candidates per fiscal year, instead of just limiting it to 20 candidates, because the opportunity may be there that they can do more than 20, and I, they've said it before. I've tested the water. I've done 55 in a one cycle, actually two classes, but one cycle at once. And when I took over as- And when I took over as the Customs Director, and Rick has said he had 34, when I took over in 1995, there was only 47 customs officers to do our borders 24/7, and that's all the borders from Anderson to the post office, to the harbor, to Aggett, to Anderson, 47. So we knew that we were definitely, definitely in need of more customs officers. When I left in 2002, we were at 220, and we had a cycle going on at that same time to go up further than that. I believe this is a step in the right direction of making sure that there is a cycle, a minimum cycle every year, because you're going to lose officers to retirements, relocations, promotions, resignations, terminations, and of course, Senator Elson, you know, from we, from our other career deployments to the Guard and Reserve. And so, we need to continuously recruit, recruit every year. We're going to have people that are going to jump ship and go to the federal government. It happens every time. You're going to, if you have customs of border protection, giving out GS-13s and GS-12s, there's no way we can compete. However, if we make the, equip the agency with as much officers as we can, we can continue to give more folks into the agency. I do agree, we need to look at all the law enforcement entities on this island, because the pay is way, way lower than, even the security guards at Anderson and Navy, we are, they are getting minimum $18 annual plus COLA, and so that's where we're losing to them. So those are things that we can do. As far as funding concerned, yes, Senator, you are correct. The legislature has been giving funding to the agency, they just need to know how to manage it. Now, when I first came in, and Ike has talked to me, there were fundings that was taken from the agency back then, and I think that has been stopped, that has been identified, and it's no longer being done. So we've identified that, and I think that funding, funding the recruits cycle every year, I think if we sit down, I can give you my ideas on that, it, there's ways to fund it, that is covered under the Service Charge Program already, it can happen. And if you go back then, back to when I was 47 and leaving at 220 officers, and I left it where that every year, they're supposed to have a recruit cycle every year. However, you know, I can't speak for previous administrations and what their priorities were and stuff, but there is the, there is the way to do it even now, that it can be funded, there's ways to do it. I certainly stand here in support of this bill, and I hope that maybe you can take this and also put it to other law enforcement entities, that they need to have a cycle every year, because I think it is really needed. So this is a stepping stone, I support this bill 100%. Thank you, ma'am, and I'll be, I'll be here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Canata. I'd like to thank all of you for your input, it's a wealth of information, like you said, 200 years of information and experience moving forward, so we're going to reach out to all of you to find a way to fund this 11.5 million dollar bill. Usually, we, it's difficult to move on a bill when there's no funding source allocated. And so, Mr. Canata, and you know, Mr. Blas, Mr. Scambalieri, and of course, the current Director in Chief and Mr. McDonald, we will be reaching out to you. So I'd like to now open the panel for questions. Excuse me? Or you want to go last? Okay. Senator Shelton, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate all of the testimony tonight, lots of information, historical information. I appreciate the lesson, Mr. Blas. And Executive Manager of the Airport, thank you very much, Senator. You were talking about, at the end of your testimony, the funding source for this, and we have a fiscal note here that tells us this is going to be a million, 11 million dollar price tag, $7 million to come from the general fund, $4 million to come from the Special Fund of Customs. And I wanted to ask, if we were tracking at pre-pandemic numbers of the Special Fund, if we get back up to that level at some point, hopefully soon, will, will the Special Fund be able to sustain that $4 million at pre-pandemic levels?
Thank you for the question, Senator. As I mentioned during our budget hearing, although we were given a four-point-something from the Special Fund, the tracking, that we're looking between now and fiscal year 2022, is that we won't even reach that particular threshold. I'm looking at probably, it's lucky if we're going to collect a million dollars of fiscal year 2022.
I'm asking the question, if we were at the pre-pandemic levels, but if we were tracking what we were tracking in 2020, 20, I mean, excuse me, 2019, 2018, if we get back up to that level, will you be able to sustain the $4 million from the Special Fund?
Yes, definitely, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I recall in 2020, early 2020 or late 2019, there was a cycle that completed, and from that cycle, what has the retention been like? Have we lost any of those new officers?
Senator, if I may, so, we had two cycles recently. We've had the 10th cycle, and we've had the 11th cycle. The 10th cycle, we put them out in the field in 2014. As of today, half of them remain. For the 11th cycle that came out, I believe it was in 2020, we are looking, we've already lost a couple, and we're looking at losing one before the end of the year. So out of like 20, I believe it's like 20 officers in this last cycle, not including the three trainees that will be graduating shortly, so we're already starting to lose officers. So it just kind of complicates where we need to go from here, but any type of assistance, of course, and collaboration that we can do in order to get us from, to fill the gap, we're willing to do.
What is the total number of officers you have now?
Total today is 118, but that includes the three trainees.
Okay, and you're expected to lose one by the end of the year?
We're actually going to be losing more, because at the end of the year, we're looking at around seven retirements, and we're looking at two, three, about three additional officers who will be leaving us for federal employment.
Deployment, you said?
No.
Or employment?
Employment with the federal government.
Federal employment, I see. And what is the ideal number of officers you need to function at the best?
Currently, in today's state, we have a planning matrix that calls for about 220-plus officers just for today. Keep in mind that we also have the satellite inspection facility that is being, that we're in the planning stages for, with, at the Port Authority of Guam, and that will also entail having to hire additional officers and civilian staff as well.
I appreciate that information, thank you very much to all of you, thank you for all of the input that you gave today for this bill. I hope that we can try to work together to achieve it. I especially appreciated your mention of diversity hiring, seeing more women in the workforce, Mr. Blas, and I know that is addressed in the general hiring of, of the government of Guam, and if this bill were to move forward, I'd like to see mention of that specifically here for any new cycles to come. I appreciate that.
If I may, Senator, when, your question, if the pre-pandemic, just the airport, airport services charge at the airport, we would have collected 14 million, 14.9 million, and I think their operational cost was only like at 9 million, so that, they over-collected. If we were to go to pre-pandemic, and so...
So there's a possibility to absorb some of that general fund?
That's correct.
Price tag?
That's correct. So if we were to be creative, we would say that the next two cycles will be, will be cycles that will go to the airport, so that the airport can absorb, the airport services charge, passenger services charge can absorb that fee.
Thank you very much, Senator. So we'll continue to pray for an end to this pandemic and do our part to keep the numbers down and hopefully welcome those visitors again.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Tonyada, do you have any questions or comments for the panel?
Thank you, Madam Chair, probably just the comment. I'd like to thank all of them, all of you here tonight that provided testimony. It just goes to show that over the years, the challenges that the customs and quarantine has had, and that it still comes to this day where we need to address these issues. I think that once we, we get the numbers down and working with the committee chair, that we'll be able to improve this bill, this legislation, and get it moved forward so that you guys will be able to get the people that you need at the front lines, at our borders, to protect our borders from everything, I mean, everything from illegal drugs and, you know, things like that. So thank you for the, all that you guys do, and I look forward to the committee chair with the markup, and then also introducing it and putting it on the floor for our session. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Adda. Senator Telotidegui, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening to hear this bill. I'm very grateful that you're here, you know, Senator Canata, you know, providing that history and what happened, taking it from 40 to 220, that's excellent. I mean, it shows it can be done. But that can be done unless there's funding, and you and I both know that. You know, we need the funding, and this bill does not allocate it. What is setting is that when we put bills in front of anyone to look through, that there should be showing where this funding is coming from. So it's going to be very difficult for me to sit here and say, yeah, this is great, we need this need to happen, when there's no funding identified in the legislation. Not only that, but the fiscal note, let me read it for the record. "It should be noted that provisions of this bill may adversely affect the governor's ability to provide financial resources to other public safety entities and/or key service areas, including health and education." So basically, the fiscal note, you know, says it all, there's no funding on this bill. But I wanted to ask the Director currently, and good afternoon, Director Paredo. Has Customs and Quarantine requested funding assistance from Adaloo to support the training cycle, and is Bill 139 necessary in order for Adaloo or the legislature to designate funds for this purpose?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Has Customs and Quarantine requested funding assistance to Adaloo, the administration, to support a training cycle, and is Bill 139 necessary in order for Adaloo and the, or the legislature to designate funds for this purpose?
Yes, ma'am. I did submit a supplemental request to Adaloo for the additional, we were requesting for 30 officers at probably 1.6 million to cover the entire training cycle.
What was your answer, the response?
The response is that the governor is support of that request, but have yet to acknowledge that, that funding is, is being allocated for the agency at this time. But I've met with the governor, and she supports the supplemental requests to ensure that we can at least recruit the additional 30 officers for this coming fiscal year.
You know, it was mentioned earlier how you graduated off a day, Mr. Pierce, so thank you so much again. It's always good to see you and having you here to answer questions. The question I have is, you just said you graduated 20 officers, right, recently? Okay, does it go through this, what the bill does, creates a cycle program? I mean, that's what they're graduating from, right?
Yes.
So we're not creating, we're not creating a new type of training or anything like that?
No. What it is, is that they're required to go through a basic law enforcement academy course, and then they have to do the in-residence, agency-centric law enforcement for an additional six months.
Okay, so this is already in the books right now, because, you know, it's ironic, that's why I pulled out my computer, because I'm looking at the way the bill is written, and it's in a certain, what is it, the Guam Code annotated is on chapter 73, Title V, and I keep looking for training and, or even assistance training or anything that has to do with kind of a program, right, or cycle, it's not there. But if you look, Mr. Canata, and you might be, can attest to this, if you look at chapter 51, Guam Code, Title 17, chapter 51, you'll find training in that area, and it may be that this, this is where this goes, in that section of the law, and not in what you have here at Title V, chapter 73, because I don't see it anywhere in here to incorporate it. Maybe, Vince, you can look into that again, and seeing that where the proper location of that to be. And also because my biggest concern is funding, you know, I mean, we're losing a lot of areas of professionalism, the police officers are losing, you know, they're individuals, nurses, teachers, we're losing them. It's about how we're able to fund it. There's no doubt in my mind, you know, that customs needs additional individuals, especially now, well, when you talked about 220, considering that, you know, not very many people are coming through the airport at this time, and if you're saying that at this time where COVID is in place, the pandemic has, you know, lessened down travelers, and you still need 220, then once this pandemic is over and it's back to normal, or we can't ever say it's going to be normal again, because, but the travel starts to pick up, you start bringing in our tourists, are you still going to need only 220?
Yes. Only because whenever we take care of inspections at the airport, even if you had just one plane with passengers, you have a minimum set of, a required number of officers to be present to provide the primary inspection, interview, the person assigned to conduct the review at the exit, the roving supervisor, the people that are assigned to Anderson Air Force Base, the guys that have to go out to the marinas, it still happens. This doesn't happen, we don't reduce the number of personnel because of the reduction in the, in the number of passengers. We still have a set number of officers that are required to be on shift to entertain one plane or 20 planes, be it 300 passengers, one passenger. It's still going to be the same requirement.
See.
And what we've done is, we've actually moved them around to be working at the quarantine facilities when the pandemic first came out, and we've moved officers into special enforcement areas so that they can focus in on narcotics enforcement and other areas. So in the meantime, while we're building up these areas in special enforcement, now we're losing people from inspection and control, which is really the border enforcement program. So now, when things settle back, we're going to be at a shortfall, because we're already about 50% under manned, based on the 220 need.
So we're really going to need more than 220?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I was, I was trying to get at. So right now, it's the situation we're at, is at 220, but we need more. But nothing stops us from moving forward, you know, especially if there's availability of funding for this, and I think that even part of this legislation, it should say that. It should say, subject to the availability of funds, you know, to incorporate in this legislation. There's a lot missing, and I'm looking forward, Madam Speaker, to the markup on this. Madam Speaker, to the markup on this legislation, you know, to, at least to bring some more, a better reality of what could really happen for Customs and Quarantine. I mean, it's no doubt, I mean, you gave a great presentation. You hit all the markers of what Customs does and the safety of its people, what we need on our borders. So I appreciate that. It reminds us, but then again, where's the funding? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tiedegui. Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the panel. I, there, let's see, where do I want to start? Okay, so in the bill, basically, if this becomes law, it's directing the Director of Customs, you're going to determine the total cost in the recruitment. You're going to submit the agency's recruitment goals to the governor. You're going to propose in your budget. We're already past your budget period for this budget period. You're looking at FY '23 before this happens, for the next budget cycle. So what this bill is telling us is that you must propose a cycle every year, right? That's it. And when you do the budget, you say, "It's going to cost me a million dollars," just like how this fiscal note did it, right? The fiscal note also says, you know, "This could also take away the governor's ability providing financial resources to other public safety entities or key services." It's about priorities. We know we got a fixed budget. We passed budgets the legislature has been working on. We also know we hired deputy directors, and we pay for other things I wonder why we pay for. So where are the priorities? So what I'm hoping this bill does by the Director of Customs is prioritize the recruitment of what you folks, what this panel has been saying. Recruitment every year, a cycle every year. And then, that budget proposed that you're going to present to the legislature will need to show, "I got 20," or if we adjust this to more, or a minimum of 20, that adjustment could be made. You come before the legislature and say, "This is the budget I need," just like you do for the past how many years. But it must include a cycle in that. And then, of course, your budget goes to the governor, and it's up to the governor to match her budget, or the governor's budget, whoever the governor will be, with the proposal from the Chief of Customs. So no matter who the chief is, no matter who the governor is, no matter what legislature this is, every year a cycle must be done. And then you put that into your budget. And then, of course, what we see with OFB and BBMR, and then with the legislature, we have to balance a budget every year. So it better darn well include Customs, new Customs cycle, because at the rate you're going, you're saying 38% of your staff there will be retiring, or are in retirement age. We know we need a budget. We're going to determine that in FY '23. I don't have the crystal ball what it's going to be. So this bill should move forward. There's no money amount to be included. Let's not get mistaken with that. What the BBMR is saying here is that it may not be our priority in this fiscal note. What the legislature is saying in this bill is, to support the public and to support our borders, is that it better darn well be a priority. And if we want to speak up and talk good to support Customs, then we have to prioritize this, not wait for pennies and dimes to figure out, "Oh, okay, now I got the money." That's ridiculous. We got good money in this government. We just need to prioritize some things. So from that, Mr. Director there, you would also have to do two things in order, if this bill does pass, propose that budget within member recruits, tell us how much is needed in that budget. That's what you call a budget. We figured it out in FY, starting FY '23, and you submitted that to the governor. It's up to the governor, if she wants, up to whoever the governor is, then, if they want to scratch that out or not. But you have to propose that in your budget. And when you present it to the legislature, then we either back you up, or we say, "No, we got other priorities," which I don't think we should. So that's one thing. And then the second part is, you wouldn't need to report on June 30th, "How's the recruiting going?" You know, give us, give us a status report, because we realize from all your experiences here, it's terrible, as it is now, because we're not funding you correctly. We're not paying you correctly either. And there's another bill for that, 3436, the PRI Act, right, with the Post Commission is going to be supportive of. So that would be addressed in another thing. But, you know, I just want to say, I really appreciate your time coming down here, but just trust, you know, this bill doesn't include a budget, but that's fine, because we haven't submitted it, because it's not going to be to FY '23. So, we do want to help your retention. You're saying you went in the 90s from 220 down, you're at 118. That's 102 loss, and you're at a 38% retirement, looking at 38% retirement. I don't know how you're going to make it unless you really fight for building your force to include, starting here with a presentation. You got to fight. So, with that, I appreciate all the input, and I know we got Jim McDonald here, and he's also part of the, oh, what do you call it, Police, Police, no, you were...
The Guam Crime Stoppers.
Guam Crime Stoppers, right? And that's where you get all your data from there. JQ gave an excellent report of all, of his past experience in that, and recruiting 55. I suppose you worked out a good budget when you got that 55, too. You didn't know where the heck it was going to come from, but you made it happen, right? So same thing here. We just make it happen. From Chief Scamboluri saying, "You know, I've been in this for how long?" We should just federalize this thing, if it's not going to work out, because we've been suffering without any money. Again, it goes back to budget. But we're going to just keep on. You know, it's a great idea. Maybe that's a long-term goal, but for now, we got FY '23 coming up, and that's where I really need you guys to fight for this. Because when it comes to that point, if this bill passes into law, then we got to fight for it during the budget as well, because it ain't over then yet. That's when you realize you get your budget or not. So, wish you luck on that, too. And Chief, as well, thank you, starting with 23. My goodness, I appreciate all your experience. So, with that, Madam Chair, I'd just like to, I'll conclude that with my closing as well, if you don't want. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. By the way, I give your comments a two thumbs up. Just a couple of questions. Chief, or Director Paredo, did you say that CQA is currently going through another cycle as we speak? Or are you speaking of the previous cycle that you did in 2020?
No. The, we're not going through a cycle at this time. What we're doing is, we have two or three officers that were a part of the 11th cycle.
Say again?
We had three of the recruits that were part of the 11th cycle that were deployed, and so their training was deferred because of their deployment. And at this time, we're just trying to catch up with them. They have completed the course requirements, the academy, and we will be completing their training within the first week of September. That's for the two officers.
Why did it take so long for the cycle to be completed? Didn't you start in FY 2020?
Yes, we did. They were employed, I, no, I'm sorry, they were deployed during that time, and then when they got back from deployment, COVID came into the picture. So GCC was closed. The academy did not start until, I think, May of this year.
So you waited for them to return from a deployment?
Yes. When they came up...
So there was, I'm sorry?
When they came back from deployment, then we started to initiate in-service training for them. But we needed for them to complete the academy at GCC, and that's why it's taking so long.
Okay. So in FY 2020, you had the 11th cycle that only consisted of those three trainees?
We had...
Or recruits?
No. We had a total of 27 recruits.
Okay.
We graduated 23.
Okay.
And then the remaining three...
Four.
Well, actually, four. One transferred to the federal fire.
Okay.
So the remaining three were deployed, and their training was delayed. But we're trying to complete that within the first week of September.
Okay. And how soon can you start up another cycle? I understand there's a vetting process. You have to go through DOA. So what is the usual turnaround time once you get authorization for the next cycle? And how soon to completion? So how soon can you recruit and complete the cycle if you were to get an appropriation for your hiring and Customs Officer Training Cycle 30, Year 1 of 4?
Thank you, Senator. So if we can, if we can help to facilitate the process, like with the Department of Administration, we could actually get them onboard a whole lot quicker. One of the challenges that we had with the previous cycle is that, really, it almost took like 12 months before we were actually able to get them onboarded and to be able to get them registered for school. There were so many, like, obstacles along the way. So if we're able to facilitate, iron it out, cross the gaps, and help have the Department of Administration and Customs collaborate, we can get them onboard within just a few months.
Okay.
But then the other challenge to that would be if the Guam Community College is in the middle of a program with another law enforcement, we would have to wait. But, you know, creatively, we can find ways. Maybe we hire them on as a Customs Officer 1, and then, you know, like, turn things around, change the paradigm. Say, we bring you on as a Customs Officer 1, and then if you go to the Basic Law Enforcement Academy, we give you some sort of incentive promotion because you now have a Basic Law Enforcement Academy certificate. And then we also maybe add incentives. If you had a degree, we give you another incentive. These are things that we can do. I mean, nothing really is too far-fetched. I know that when we came in, many of, all of us here at the table, when we were hired, we were hired as Customs Officer Ones. It was only when we started doing the academy-style Basic Law Enforcement Academy that we created the position of Customs Trainee, and in some ways, that's very limiting. But going back to answer your question, if we were to be able to facilitate with and collaborate with DOA, we could get them on within a period of a few months.
Two months?
Yes.
Oh, that's very good. So, that's to hire them, not for them to complete the training, though, right? Just to hire them as the Customs Officers 1, as you presented?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
We can find ways to be able to, like, catch them up on training and before they go to school, but to me, nothing is impossible.
Does the government of Guam absorb the cost of their schooling for their criminal justice certificate?
At this point, yes. We pay for the schooling. If a cadet comes in and he's already got the Basic Law Enforcement Academy certificate, there is a part within the Guam Code Annotated that allows for that trainee to get reimbursed for school costs. So, one way or another, we're going to end up paying for their school.
And then, when you do the training cycle, does the government fund the training cycle?
Yes, we will fund the training cycle.
Okay. And that includes an annual salary of how much?
Recruit salary?
If I'm not mistaken, I've been thinking it's around, like, is it 26?
24, I think.
Twenty, about 24, starting. And then, we ran into a situation with this last set of the trainees. They actually got an increment as a trainee, which was really unheard of because of the delays in their, in their training cycle. But yes, if they get picked up and they reach their annual anniversary, they will get an increment.
Okay. And then you mentioned that we are losing some officers to federal employment. Is that correct?
Yes.
So since the government is funding, funding their schooling for their criminal justice certificate, which is about $7,000 per student, and then the government is funding their training cycle, which is about $52,000 per individual, is there any contract or obligation that you provide, or that you somehow come into an agreement that these personnel who are being funded by the government should stay in those positions for an X amount of years or time served?
Okay, so we've run into a situation like that several times, and we've made inquiries on whether or not we can actually have them sign some sort of contract. But typically, the response that we've been getting is that, "No, you can't do that." But if there's a way maybe to mandate it somehow, and I don't know if that, that is something that can be handled here. I don't know. All I know is that we weren't able to do that, but the question was posed previously.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief.
Senator, that's a million-dollar question we've been trying to do since back when I was Director. Somehow to keep them, if we were to pay X amount of dollars for their training cycle that they, in service, they need to repay back at least X amount. So let's say they relocate to the federal government in two years, whatever two, four years left, they should repay back. But legal, when we tried to do that, legal came in and says, unless the legislature comes in and puts some kind of statute to allow that to happen. So maybe that's something that you guys can consider.
Thank you.
And that's for all, all law enforcement, because we're losing them to federal government.
Thank you, Mr. Kanata. You also mentioned that you have a planning matrix, Chief, for 220 officers?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you please submit your planning matrix to this committee?
Yes, I can leave a copy of it here.
Okay. And then, Mr. Kanata, you know, we've been battling this passenger fee increase with GIAA for several years, and the challenge is for, usually, speaking with prior airport management leadership, the challenge was CQA needs to come and present their case to the board. And so, so what we're, what I'm asking is that if CQA comes and presents their case to the board with all the airlines, would they somehow agree to increase the passenger fee?
So, ma'am, the way, the way that works, it doesn't come to the airport board. It goes through, it, there's a process that the airlines has to comment on. So, for example, every year, every year, what drives the passenger fee is what the legislature approves for Customs for passenger air services. So, if, for example, that we are projecting 1 million passengers for FY '22, you take FY '22 times or divided by the amount that Customs is requesting for, for air passenger services, like, for example, people that are working airport services. And it's not only folks that are working just at the airport, but a percentage of, for admin, for all other areas that support the airport. And so, what would happen is these, these recommendations now, or this request, goes through a process with the airlines. If it's going to go up, it'll go, it'll go through a process so that the airlines can make comment whether, man, you're, with the amount of passengers coming in, or with the amount of air cargoes that are coming in, it doesn't meet our operational costs. So, that process, it doesn't go to the Guam Airport Authority Board. It goes through the airlines, which are the stakeholders here, to make comment whether they agree or disagree with that part. Right now, it's 829, and based on what Customs is asking for, whether it'll go up or it'll go down, based on what, what the senators or what the legislature approves for their budget for FY '22.
Thank you. So when we submit the bill in a couple of days to increase the passenger inspection fee for $25... fee for twenty-five dollars, the airport will support it?
The airport, it's not the airport to support, but it's for customs to justify it to the airlines. Because what's going to happen, what's going to happen is that if it goes up to twenty-five dollars an hour, the airport's going to, of course, request all down to the penny exactly what that twenty-five dollars is used for.
Right. And would it be possible, would the airports support an increase in the passenger inspection fee when the bill comes to?
Of course, Senator, it's not the airport to say yea or nay that we're going to support it, because what really drives it is the legislature's approval. That's what drives it.
Right.
All we do, all we are is, we'll let IATA know that in order for passengers to come in to the airport, this is the fee that is being charged, and that's what will be put on the, of course, the ticket. Now, that's what will be charged on the ticket automatically before they come in.
Right. So would you come and support the passenger inspection fee when we have the public hearing on the bill to increase it for the customs and quarantine?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. I'm trying to understand this. I'm trying to make sure what I'm hearing is correct, right? So like I said, what drives the airport fee is what the legislature approves.
Right.
If they approve twenty-five dollars, then that's what they approve, and we have to help them with the process. The airlines will be the one to comment, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Canata. I look forward to your testimony. Okay, I believe that we've exhausted all items for this bill. Now we will transition into the next bill, which is the An Act to Amend, subsection 1112.3, echo of chapter one, title twelve, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Providing Parity for the Guam Airport Civilian Volunteer Police Reserve. And that's bill number ninety-two dash thirty-six.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Blas.
Can you give me the opportunity to make just a few more comments?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Can you give me the opportunity to make a few more comments?
Absolutely.
This is relative to what Ralph had mentioned earlier about the, to federalizing Guam Customs. I actually have actual information related to that, because back then, Governor Camacho had tasked me to review a request that was actually picked up by the company Nike, that they wanted to establish a regional distribution center out of Guam. And my task was to meet with the regional distribution centers such as FedEx and DHL. And that led me to a visit to U.S. Customs in Washington, D.C. There was a general discussion regarding what are the opportunities for Guam and Guam Customs being managed by U.S. Customs. I didn't think much of it at that point, but later on, as I headed out to the San Francisco Port, I was met by Director Richard Venus, who basically told me that there is a move within U.S. Customs, but they won't let me, they won't give me that information until I get to Honolulu. So I got to Honolulu a couple of days later, met up with Port Director Lamar Whitmer. And it was at this point where U.S. Customs had an interest in Guam Customs to federalize it. What was the view from our side? They wanted my view personally, but was kind of taken back, because towards the end of that discussion point was the, like, I guess I was being baited. We'll give you this, but you're going to have to support us on another matter related to the Port Director Guam at that time with U.S. Immigration. And that person was a very close friend of mine, and I did not want to compromise. But the intent of U.S. Customs was basically a bigger interest to give us the regional distribution center, to help us manage it. And if we wanted to be federalized, that they are in a position to do that. But in order to do that, they wanted the compromise on my side on a different matter that I didn't want to get involved with. So there was an interest. We thought about it. We spoke to, I spoke to Ralph, who at that time was my chief, regarding the interest about federalizing it. A week later, I met with Governor Camacho to brief him on my visit and what transpired regarding the RDC and the interest of U.S. Customs. The question he raised was, what was my opinion? I kind of mix, knowing the history of what I've been through with Guam Customs, all the political involvement, the ins and outs, everything from hiring, the staffing, even the most minute things of annual leaves and whatnot. And my opinion then was, federalize that. But I've never been in the federal service, so I wouldn't know that part of an experience to kind of weigh the difference. The Organic Act mandates the governor of Guam to enforce our borders. That mandate is transferred to Guam Customs. And back in the nineteen, I believe nineteen-fifties, it was the Port Security Act. I believe that that act is still in effect. I'm not, I think Director Canata can correct me if the Port Security Act is still in effect. I don't think it was ever.
Still there.
Was it?
It's still, it's still good, it's still, still in effect.
Still in effect. So, you know, again, I'm like Ralph, we sort of, if this can't be resolved, then maybe we should be federalized. But I'm not sure if that's the correct answer. But I think the important role as retired customs officers is that the agency gave me a lot of opportunities, opportunities that Ralph and I and I believe Vince were all involved in a very sensitive, highly-regarded case out of, that started in Boston with an arms dealer. A lot of people are not even aware that that actually happened here in Guam. Many of the, my staff at that time were, I guess, are considered the mafia group that led a Chinese arms dealer into Guam, isolated, went through customs and immigration. And he was attempting to buy a triggering device, an F-4 Phantom Jet, that was to go to Iran. So Guam Customs gets involved in a lot of this high-profile case. The other case that netted Guam Customs its current old-weather boat was from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, where Guam Customs was awarded a certificate from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, along with, I believe, it's a forty-two-foot boat, and then three engines, a brand-new truck for the seizure of a forty-foot shark fins, one of the largest haul ever in the U.S. ports. So, you know, we kind of get involved really high, but when you look at how we got involved, we also need to look at how the officers are being managed. And if we don't have the support group to support each other so that we can also advance opportunities, not just for our officers, but for Guam, you know, we do tend to lose. Earlier, one brought up the issue regarding this ongoing crisis with the methamphetamine. The sad thing about it is I have not heard of any customs cases. If they have, then I wasn't aware of it, but we used to be very active. When Frank Blas was with GPD, we do a lot of controlled deliveries, a lot of seizures. Yet, we're hearing people coming in with kilos of these narcotics. And why, I think it's very important to highlight the fact that this agency needs help. They need the support of the legislature to give them what they need. And we may differ in opinions regarding the training, but I also feel that the training of these officers must be made professional. They should not come from the rank and file of customs. Someone should be hired to provide that service, to bring these officers up in a manner that would equate the responsibility that are going to be bestowed upon them. So again, thank you very much.
Senator, could I say one more thing? About one more hour? After reading this bill, I think it's merely to give the director a plan for, if I'm correct, I think being repetitive with whatever the senator said earlier, Senator Moren, regards to, it's a plan for the director to make for the following, for the next budget for recruitment and to put a budget out for what he needs. Because the Guam Community College changes their rates a lot. And I think sometimes it's cheaper to have a larger cycle, like when J.K. was there, because you get them out faster and cheaper, instead of waiting for another year and everything changes and rates and all, you know? So that might be looked at, Mr. Director, concerning that, or maybe a larger core of individuals to go to Guam Community College. The one thing you said, Senator, regards to the contracts, we went through that, talking to the Attorney General's Office, to get officers to sign contracts when they were recruited, but they said we couldn't do it. But I differ that, because when you go, when you get a Doc Sanchez, you go into the Doc Sanchez program, you sign an obligation, I think you have to repay the government back, right? If I'm correct, that you have to put some service back. So there's no difference to me than the Doc Sanchez, to get someone to sign a contract, to pay back what the government put, to provide services to the government of Guam, you should pay it back if you quit. So there's no difference between the Doc Sanchez and getting a contract with an individual that wants to get free schooling. That's how I see it. Two weeks before I retired in 2016, I took a trip out to, it was a very important trip. It was concerning preclearance with U.S. Customs and the Japan government, and with Guam Customs and the Northern Marianas. They wanted to have preclearance passengers coming in from Japan to Guam and Japan to Hawaii, to get away from the bottleneck of CBP Upstairs Immigration into Honolulu, to get the tourists out within one hour out of the airport, then they could spend more money. They wanted to do this in collaboration with the Japan government, with the U.S. government. But they needed one, two parts. They needed Saipan, the Northern Marianas, I don't want to talk, you know, their behalf, but this is what happened, and Guam Customs to work collaboratively with the federal government, that we could get these guys straight off the plane, straight out to the markets, to shop. And this is where we station individuals in Japan to preclear passengers coming in. Then there'll be no need for customs, but there'll still be presence of customs to monitor and do the other things for targets and everything. So this was a discussion in Hawaii two weeks before I retired. And they asked me, like what Rick said, federalization. And my opinion was, I think it's needed, because Guam has tremendous amount of federal assets in this island, tremendous, billions and billions of dollars, not just to protect the federal government, the local people from disease, from quarantine issues, with everything you could think of. We have an island that is surrounded of water. That's our natural border. We have, it's very hard to infiltrate Guam, you know, with aliens and things like that, you know, illegal. But there's things that we should look at, because this is a long-haul thing. It's not overnight we could think about it, because we have to change the Organic Act and all. But I think it's a conversation that the legislature should talk about, and I think the governor and our leaders, because it's truly needed, not just to protect the federal government, it's to protect the island. We do eighty to ninety percent of the work in customs for the federal government for free. Every mandate is out there, Director and Vince and Jimmy and Rick, correct me? Majority of the mandates are federal mandates, very minimal for local mandates, if I'm correct, Vince? And not only that, our collecting of tax is nothing that we're, oh, man, if we get to the federal government, we're going to lose a lot in collecting a tax. It's really minute, compare in the long run what will happen if we get federalized. I think it's a better, better for this island. I know the officers in customs could migrate into federal employees, maybe not all of them, but I think majority of them will even want to transfer over and get the proper equipment, proper training, proper pay, and also proper protection for this island. So that's my spiel on it. And I think this bill, it is tremendously needed, but it actually, I think it'll lead to probably, who knows, federalization, you know? Thank you very much.
Just a comment, I think we can take this to a different discussion, because, yeah, I have a different opinion of federalizing Guam Customs, so.
Okay, we'll have a roundtable hearing. We've actually been bringing it up, right, Chief? Several times, asking you about your input in the federal government. And so we'll have a roundtable hearing to discuss if Customs and Quarantine is open to the transitioning into a federal agency. Okay, very good. Is there any last comments from you gentlemen that you'd like to say before we move on to the next bill? Thank you all for your input. Okay, now we will move to discuss bill ninety-two dash thirty-six. I would invite Senator Shelton for her opening remarks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Hafiday, buonasera. Sutuas Massey, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak on bill ninety-two dash thirty-six LS and for hearing this bill this evening, I appreciate it. Bill number ninety-two dash thirty-six was authored by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya-Barnes and myself. It's an Act to amend, section 1112.3E of chapter one, title twelve, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Providing Parity for the Guam Airport Civilian Volunteer Police Reserve. Vice Speaker Tina Munya-Barnes and I introduced bill ninety-two thirty-six at the request of Chief Vince Nappati of the Guam Airport Police Department. Over the years, the Guam Airport Police Department has responded to an increase of mutual aid calls outside of their jurisdiction in an effort to fill the gaps of their sister enforcement agencies. The airport police department is comprised of trained, qualified, post-certified professionals whose roles have evolved with the changing security demands of a world-class airport. In addition to maintaining a post-certified force, APD also complies with TSA and FAA regulations and works closely with other federal and local agencies to abide by federal, local, and international security mandates. We know that the pay scale of our airport police officers, this pay scale's much lower than their law enforcement counterparts throughout the government of Guam and federal counterparts as well. As a result, APD has a higher attrition rate. The APD reservists are trained and qualified individuals who are capable and ready to augment the APD as needed. However, upon the increase of stipends for the marshal reservists, APD saw their entire reserve force depleted almost instantaneously. Bill ninety-two dash thirty-six creates parity for our airport police department reservists. With the critical shortage of law enforcement officers on our island, higher pay at our local and federal law enforcement entities make the airport police department a stepping stone for those who want to pursue a career in law enforcement. By creating parity on the reservist level, this will allow for a more robust recruitment effort, and ultimately, should there be need to augment effort and ultimately, should there be need to augment APD, a mission-capable reservist force is standing by to assist in addressing any potential public safety threat at hand. I want to thank the Guam International Airport Authority Executive Manager, thank you very much, Senator JQ Kanata. Thank you for being here today. And I look forward to the testimony from the airport and the discussion tonight from our colleagues to help strengthen this bill. Sutuus Massey, on behalf of Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes and myself. All right, we will hear testimony now from the Airport Executive Manager, John Kanata. Thank you.
Thank you for my oversight chair, Senator Amanda Shelton. Of course, hopefully Senator Selena Nelson will be back. And of course, Senator James Moynihan, thank you for being here. Hafadeh, distinguished members of this committee, my name is John M. Kanata. I am the Executive Manager of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Guam, GIAA. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 92-36 LS, An Act to Amend, Section 112.3, Paragraph E of Chapter 1, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Providing Parity and Monthly Allowance for the Guam Airport Civilian Volunteer Police Reserve Program, known as GACVPR. The officers of GACVPR programs are well-respected and an integral part of meeting the AB Wampat International Airport Authority's mission in providing a safe and secure airport. The police reserves are sworn police officers who volunteer their time and effort to protect our airport community. They assist full-time airport police officers in the performance of their duties to include police patrol and investigative law enforcement work, emergency response and support at the scene, at-the-scene security, and render aid to airport patrons and passengers as needed, to name a few. While they perform under the supervision and instructions of airport police officer in charge, they generally have the same authority of a regular airport police officer while on duty. They also are held to the same standard of conduct as a regular airport police officer. This program has been in place for almost 10 years, and it is an extremely valuable opportunity for the men and women in the community to explore the law enforcement career field, receive training and experience that would benefit them should they decide to pursue a full-time career, law enforcement career. In addition, the GACVPR program provides a possibility of the new career path for individuals without them having to give up their regular employment. Reserves, reserve officers must complete the peace officer standards and training certification or equivalent training in order to be sworn in as a reserve police officer. The current program requires they perform a minimum of 20 hours of volunteer service each month to remain as a volunteer reserve officer, and they are provided a monthly stipend of $250 on completing 42 service hours each month. The GACVPR program has struggled with the recruiting and retaining of qualified and dedicated citizens to serve as a volunteer police, a peace officer for the airport. We believe that the passage of 92-36 is a step in the right direction in helping support our volunteer reserve officers by increasing their monthly stipend from $250 to $500 and restore communities' recognition and respect for their dedicated service. This will provide parity in compensation similar to the programs of the Guam Police Department Reserves and the Superior Court Guam Marshals Reserve Program, both which provide a $500 stipend each month for their volunteers. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of this, of Bill 92-36 and look forward of its passage. Thank you. And I'll be, I'll be open subject to your questions. Senators.
Thank you, Mr. Kanata. Senator Moynihan, do you have any questions or comments at this time? No questions? Senator Shelton?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I mean, Madam Chair. Freudian slip, right?
Oh, no, Senator Shelton?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said Senator Taidegui. My bad.
Oh, no, no.
It's what, 7 o'clock?
Don't worry, Senator, I know you're there, we'll get you.
7 o'clock. I'm half asleep, sorry.
Okay. Senator Shelton? Okay, Senator Taidegui.
There you go. Plus, I'm dodging these, these pointed staplers that are in the area. Anyways, Senator, thank you so much for being here. I'm gonna ask you one question, you know, this, this is requesting for some funding. Well, first, I want to read the fiscal note that says that BBMR was not able to determine the cost of this because currently GIAA does not have any Guam Airport civilian volunteers' police reservists at this time. Is that true?
We have zero at this time, and, and one of the reasons why is, of course, when, when we did have the police reserves, we had an opening for airport police officer ones, and a lot of these police reserves applied and were selected to be a, a full-time, full-fledged police officer. So, yes, we have zero at this time, and the others is because when, when the law was passed that the marshals and GPD reserves were gonna get a $500 stipends, a lot of our police officers that are already certified transferred over to the judiciary marshals or the Guam Police Department police reserves.
Senator, just Guam police, I mean, not Guam police, but airport, do they pay for the airport police out of your own funding?
Yes, it, it all, it is all covered under the GIA.
Okay, funding.
Funding source, so it's, nothing comes out of the general fund.
General fund, right.
Yes.
So considering what's been going on for the last, what, now a couple of years, you know, we're going into second year of this pandemic and the loss of, you know, revenue going into the airport, thank goodness you're getting quite a bit of money on the federal side, you know, in the ARF money. I, I believe you, you got CARES money, but the, any kind of other federal money, and I wouldn't be surprised if you got some ARF funding too. Can this funding be used to, for this particular bill on reserves of 500?
Definitely, yes, ma'am. One of the things that the FAA always ensures, that the safety and the security of the airport is paramount. And one of the, one of the issues is that, that security, of course, airport police and ARF are fully funded 100% at all times. And that's inclusive of any programs that support the, the airport police.
Because you're an autonomous agency and you're going by the board, can't the board just do this on their own without needing legislation to allow you to, to do this?
Um, I, I, you know, we...
Because you pay for your own police officers out of your own budget.
Yeah, but, but I think we, we do need statutory authorization to pay reserves at that level. I, I don't think that the board can authorize that out of our own, but they'll authorize a funding that we're putting in for them.
You authorize salary increases, right?
We do the salary compensation, but not for reserves.
But the board, what I'm saying is that the board authorizes for any kind of salary increments or even the salary rate, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So why couldn't they be able to do this? It's, I'm curious, because, you know, you overseeing the airport, please.
So, yeah, you know what, I would go back and, and look at that, that question to, to make sure that I am...
The authority yourself, within yourself.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know how that rolls.
Yes.
So if you could look into that, but, you know, obviously, you know, this is something, if the airport can afford it, you'll do it. If you can't, you can't.
Right, right.
And, you know, it's important to stay on top of your finances right now, especially the airport.
I, I think, I think at this time, Senator, because the, the, the airport police and ARF still falls under the law enforcement compensation.
Pay grade?
Pay grade, that, that's probably why we're still coming here.
Okay.
If we were, if they were under the CTP, then, then I think that, but I may be wrong, I'm gonna check with legal to make sure that, that, that's correct.
That'd be good.
Yes.
And I'm sure, like I said, if you don't have the funding, you won't do it, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're the one that holds the purse strings on this one.
Right.
So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Kanata. Senator Shelton Anna offered for the final closing remarks. Thank you very much. I think everything was covered here today. It's, it's a very straightforward bill, and I appreciate the time of the airport to be here and to support it. We want to see, you know, the best possible support for the Airport Police Department to essentially support the safety of our airport and our entire community here on island. So we look forward to this move, this bill moving forward, and I thank you, Madam Chair, for hearing it and your time tonight. Thank you. Thank you for being here. We were having some challenges with the budget session and scheduling this hearing, so thank you again, Mr. Kanata, for showing up this evening. It is now 19:04 in the evening, 19:04. We will now adjourn and conclude this public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Be safe.
Thank you. God bless.